All right, being seven o'clock, I'd like to open the planning board meeting for January 19th, 2022 via Zoom. All right, first up, we've got the public council for score site plan modification at 144 Sturridge Road. And they have requested a continuance to February 2nd. And do you have any comments?
Amanda Jenks, Patrick Benoit. I guess my problem is, as you know, and I know you guys may not even be able to answer this for me. Both myself and Patrick have requested them to please call us back and to sit down and have a meeting with them back in November. They not bothered to contact us. Over and discuss with the foreman two or three weeks ago in regards to starting before 7:00 AM. We had a big, huge truck at 5:30 in the morning, sitting in the parking lot, idling with their lights going into my bedroom window till after 7:00. And I'm not really sure who to discuss this with because this has got to stop. Agreements at 8:00 to 8:00 that four score proposed way back in time. I get 7:00 AM is construction time, but to have delivery trucks sitting out there idling, making my whole house shake. I have four dogs. Do you think anyone got any sleep after 5:30 yesterday morning? And this goes on constantly. They start 10:00 to 7:00 quarter till. Okay, great. You know what? I haven't whined. But the morning they started at 6:20 unloading construction equipment, I went over and spoke to them. They promised me it'd never happen again. And I get this as a delivery truck, but how many times is this going to proceed? We are a residential house that lives next door to them. They promised us consideration when this all started.
All right, that's your Randy. Do you ever contact info that you could contact them and stress to them when they were coming in if they do not?
Yes, I can do that.
Amanda, if you get another, if it happens again, contact Randy and Randy, you have my authorization and if the board wants to speak up to give them a software order.
Because we talked to Don Higgins, their lawyer, both of us. I talked to him on 11:04 and Pat talked to him on 11:24. And he said he would get in touch with the owners and have them contact us. Now we're, you know, six, seven weeks out from that and we're still having issues.
Is that Mr. Glickman, the lawyer?
No, it was Don Higgins that contacted us.
Okay. I'm not familiar with him. If you have any contact information for him, could you send it to me?
Can I give it to you this way? Because I'm not the best with other options.
You have a phone number?
I do.
Okay.
It is 1-401-491-9552.
I will reach out to him and try to get this resolved.
You know, we didn't even just like leave messages. We spoke to him.
Okay.
He said, oh, I'll get in touch with them.
I'll reach out to him and try to get this resolved. So, but if you do have any, if it continues, please call me here at the planning board office. So I'm aware it's still going on if they don't live up to, you know, what they said that they would do.
And you know, I have not complained once about all the noise during normal work hours. But I have a right to be able to sleep till the time my alarm clock goes off to go to work. I don't think that's unreasonable. And I'm not asking even sleep past 7:00 AM, but 5:30 is terrible.
Right.
All right, Amanda, so.
And that's really the biggest concern that, you know, I have to deal with you guys in regards to everything else will be dealt with them when we, you know, have the meeting in two weeks.
All right. Perfect. All right, so seven o'clock, Randy, so that Amanda and Patrick know when to show up on the second.
Yes.
Again, continue to?
Yes.
All right. I can read, I need to do a vote, Randy, on that for the continuance.
Um, I think.
I mean, they requested it, so.
Yeah. I don't, you just have to grant their request.
Yeah. All right. Do you have a motion to grant four scores request to continue to February 2nd? At seven, at seven o'clock for their public hearing?
Uh, so moved.
All right, all those in favor. All right. Alicia.
Hi.
Don Clay.
Uh, Don Clay, aye.
John Smith.
John Smith, aye.
Phil Fontaine.
Phil Fontaine, aye.
All right, Ross, Anthony, aye. All right. All right, being 7:05, we want to move to the forever hopeful LLC. Site plan approval extension request at 16 Sturridge Road.
Um, yeah, because we've, we're not there for the public hearing on the other one at the time. So yes, forever hopeful. So, um, in the SharePoint file, I had shared the, uh, original site plan pages. It showed what was being proposed on that property. It's property where the Yankee Diner is located.
Is this, uh, is this the page?
No, it says for the, it's three pages. Yeah, it's forever hopeful.
Okay.
Yankee Crossing.
This is page one?
Yes. It's street sheets because the rest were just cut sheets, so.
Okay, so this is probably the best one to look at?
Right.
Okay.
Don, can you collapse that right-hand side bar thing? For a little more screen. Thank you.
Probably going to be too big, but let's give this a try.
Much easier to see.
Yeah.
Okay. So this is what was originally proposed?
Yes, this was the approved plan.
The configuration of the road in front, is that the new configuration or is that the old configuration? That looks like the old configuration, right?
Yes, it is the old configuration. I think this point in time, if they were to actually try to construct this, they might have to go back to mass DOT in particularly in light of all the other new projects that are on 20. You know, that this, this configuration of this entrance might not work.
Yeah. Now, if their annual extension last year, the year before, do they have their drainage looked at?
Did they, they have their what?
Their drainage looked at? Because if it was out of date with current, um, storm water?
Uh, no, they did not. Actually, that would be interesting to know if that would work. I mean, Matthew T somehow has to give them some sort of access to the property. It already has it. It was just a matter of how it's done, but stormwater and everything could have changed a lot in this period of time. So whether what they proposed back then would work in today's world, I don't know. So if the board was to, uh, you know, grant their exemption, it might be a good idea to have Mike Enray look at the stormwater to determine if it meets the current regulations or not.
And when we originally did, um, the approval, wasn't the box factory still up and viable? So we had that to contend with as well as traffic, um, and any stormwater coming off of that project. So now that that's defunct, there's no more traffic coming off of there. Um, do we want to look at that as well?
Yeah, something to consider.
I'm sorry, Randy, again, when was the original, when was this original site plan approved in 91?
Mid to late 2000s gone, I think.
Okay. Okay.
Yeah.
Because I mean, look at the, what the date on that plan is.
2007, yeah.
2007, okay. So it's been almost 15 years, right?
Yeah.
How long do we, how long do we normally leave a site plan like this open? I mean, this is 15 years beyond a reasonable time to have an open site plan?
Oh, that's a long time.
That's, I was, I was going to say, it seems like 15 years with an open site plan seems a little excessive to me.
Well, the good news is pretty soon our site plan will be able to graduate from high school.
That's true.
Well, actually, in light of the fact that they just rebuilt the Yankee Diner and everything, uh, you know, I don't know how realistic this is that it will ever be built. And they still have the issue with water over there. And as long as they can't get water, which we have no idea how long that's going to be. You know, Mass DOT has plans to replace that bridge, but nobody's going to run water across that bridge until it's replaced. And that could be 10 years away for all we know.
So in three years, it'll be 20 years with an open site plan.
Right.
Yeah, I'm, I, I think that's a bit excessive. My personal opinion.
I swear, and as far as what stormwater or in general, as far as can, um, granting the extension down.
Um, as far as granting the extension, I'm not sure if it's, if it's feasible to grant an extension if, if it's beyond buildable at this point. Or has been so long, we're granting an extension for him to build what he has here. And I don't think that anything that he can build here now would be feasible or anything.
I have to agree. And I have to say, I don't think the information that he's going to present is viable now because it is 15 years old. So again, where you need new traffic, we would just, and the site as it stands wouldn't support this anyway.
So in light of needing new stormwater, new traffic, new, you know, everything else, that's, that's a majority of the, uh, of the site plan anyways. I mean, he could always resubmit these drawings and, and go through the site plan approval process again.
Right.
But, uh, to keep it open for, for over 20 years just seems, seems excessive. And he still has to comply with today's zoning or does he comply with when this site plan was approved zoning?
Well, I mean, the site plan itself, I can't, I can't, uh, speak for parking, but it seems like there's a lot of parking here. As far as setback requirements and everything, nothing's changed on this property. The stormwater is going to be the biggest impact and also traffic on Route 20. Because even the road configuration now, that's changed, you know, from what is up, you know, what's there today. So they might have to submit a whole new traffic report, revise the entrance based on what Mass DOT might want them to do. This was proposed years ago, long before all the other, you know, new development has happened on 20.
They'd have them do a complete street analysis too. And that's, there's nothing about, there's no walks, there's no curb ramps, all of that.
All right, so what is, go right ahead.
Go ahead, I'm done.
Okay. All right, so we still, I guess, um, we have a motion on how to act on this, uh, site plan on the, uh, request for extension.
Can we deny the request for an extension?
Yes, you can. The, the board has the authority to do that.
I'm not sure if I'm allowed to vote, but my suggestion would be to just to deny the, um, request.
And just a little bit more discussion, just for, I guess, sake of precedence, like how long is too long? We would, they would have to be compelled to like do the road, uh, the street analysis and the traffic analysis. So we could compel them to comply with the new stormwater management regulations and do a traffic study, right? So that would be, in addition to your site plan here, we still want you to do a, an additional stormwater study, a traffic study and revise your site plan. So can we just ask them to revise the site plan or not renew it? And make them do it all over again? I'm just unsure of how, how much can they revise this original application? Or can we compel them to revise the original application?
I, the other option you have is, uh, you could table it for tonight and request the property owner to come in and, you know, basically justify on why you think the board should, you know, grant the extension or not. You know, how viable is this plan actually, you know, for realistic, is it actually going to be built? And do they understand if they were to build, they would have to, you know, comply with the stormwater, likely do a new traffic study?
Yeah, I don't think that's a bad idea. I think I'm along, agree along, along the lines of, of bill as far as the revisions and even having Graves take a look at it. So what would need to be updated and then in the input from Steve Pyke or Burton as far as any crosswalks and sidewalks and stuff like that. John Smith, do you have any suggestions here?
I mean, it'll be a financial, through the chair, it'll be a financial burden for them to, to, uh, update their plan and traffic study. Oh, maybe they won't want to do that, you know, I, I'm kind of with Randy or whoever suggested that. Maybe should have them come in and, you know, just say, hey, you know, this is, we're, we're, we're leaning on denying your application because two things, uh, we're with our zoning and Route 20, we're, we're examining all these properties anyways. And that, that area of town is going to be subject to, to some major reconstruction. Your, your plan as it is now is not going to work.
Yeah, I mean, even likely with the entrance, they're proposing like left and right turns. I doubted this time that Mast DOT would let them even do that. You know, probably like right turn in, right turn out, but they wouldn't let them. I can't say they won't let them do it, but I think it would be difficult to get Mast DOT to approve that. So I think they're going to have a number of issues they're going to have to address.
Is there any, is there any temps on this plan? Like, how are they going to do the improvements on the road?
I know it'll be, the approvals to the road would be through Mast DOT. And we're just thinking as a board in the future for the, the traffic impact from both of the new approved, um, distribution centers. One at, uh, 52 Sturridge Road and then 241.
This is also prior to Treehouse.
Correct. Randy, be possible to reach out to the, um, through the bubble slash property owner. So if you could make it at our February 2nd meeting?
Yeah, I'll do, I'll do that.
Oh.
Yeah.
All right, being 7:20, you got the public hearing for Edward Services LLC, site plan application, fuel station and convenience store, 16 Sturridge Road. And read the public hearing notice.
To the chair, Steve Pyke, Burton Engineering.
Yeah. All right, and according to the questions, yeah, go right ahead, Randy.
No, I say you gotta read the, uh, notice.
Perfect. All right, and according to section 200 dash 2.2, 200 dash 7.1D and 200 dash 7.2 of the Topson zoning by law, the Topson Board will hold a public hearing on Wednesday, January 5th. 22, 7:20 PM in the planning board office when the Juncy McKeen Street Building, 37 Main Street, Johnson, Mass. And the site plan application, Edward Services LLC, 233 East Main Street, South Beach, Mass. 01550 for a Cyclone app, Cyclone app for a gas station convenience store. The applicant proposes to construct a gas station. Will have four gas tanks or eight fueling positions in a 2000, 2000 square foot building housing and convenience store. The property is located at 16 Sturridge Road. Accessing that 27 block C, 557 and a 220 acres in a zone industrial general, property with a special permit and certain application are available. And especially between board office and the town coach, I would be regular business hours. And if a person interested or wishing to be heard should appear at the time and place designated. All right. So Randy, want to give a quick overview? Engineer for his presentation?
The proposals for a gas station slash convenience store at the property that was recently, uh, I should say recently, but previously approved as a restaurant location. Now, um, the new proposals to have the gas station slash convenience store at the site. The, uh, the, they're not proposing any drive-through at the convenience store. It's going to be, you know, from what I see with the site plan, a gas pump convenience store with, uh, you know, your typical convenience store with groceries and coffee on the inside. They're proposing to, uh, have entrance going westbound on 20 and exiting going only westbound on 20, not taking a left turn out of the site. Which is a significant issue on Route 20 in light of the fact that everything is going on there. The only thing I can say with this application is the traffic study was done basically with the information from the old plan, which is well before Treehouse. We have now, you know, proposed new developments on 20 that is in effect thousands of cars a day on Route 20. And this application is not addressing that, whether they have to or not, that's should be, um, confirmed. But the traffic study is based on all information from 2017 prior, which was before even Treehouse Brewery, much less the Amazon facility and the others. So I would, I mean, it's up to the board as they've done with all the other cap applications. Just have the traffic engineer review the traffic impact study to determine where they think what is being proposed at this property with that traffic impact study is adequate or not, as we've done with the other applications.
To the chair, Ross.
All right, go ahead, Steve.
Ross, you should know that this is before Mast DOT currently, and there's a Schap's permit on it. And, um, Ollie has actually spoke with Eric and Chris about this. They initially asked them to do counts on 169.
Yeah.
Um, Ollie was able to discuss that with them and they no longer need to do counts. So I believe, if I'm not mistaken, and from what my permitting says so far, Mast DOT has accepted this study.
Do you have a letter that you could provide to the board for Mast DOT confirming that?
I also have a Schap's permit that you can look up online too, if you'd like.
Just more confirmation, I guess, right, Randy?
Yeah, we should have confirmation from Mast DOT that they're accepting the traffic study as is.
And I can also provide that information to the peer review engineer.
And, and also verify whoever Mast DOT was aware of the other projects that were going on at the time. I assume they would be, but it's a big group.
Well, there hasn't been any comment at 25 and 75% design development review. Uh, so I would assume that if there was a concern, uh, they would have voiced it by now.
Uh, but either way, we're going to need confirmation from DOT sign off.
From?
All right. So Randy, did you have anything else to add before Steve does his overview of the plan?
Uh, well, as you, there's a letter also in, that has been sent in the SharePoint file from our building commissioner slash zoning official that he has, uh, issue with the canopy, not the, uh, over the gas pumps not meeting the setbacks. Uh, Mr. Pyke was aware of that. There, he had responded with a letter, I think today or yesterday that has been submitted back to, uh, the building commissioners zoning officer and Kurt hasn't replied to that yet. We also haven't received a, uh, report from Graves Engineering. Folks like Andre today, he had, uh, expects to have it complete next week.
Now, I, I know that, um, in our packet, the, the response letter we got through from Steve to some of Curtis's, uh, comments and stuff. Um, I see Steve mentioned on with the canopy, all the hangings reference the, uh, Ford Glaston Road and 27B. Gas stations right up the street as far as them not, um, letting in the, uh, the zoning, within the zoning setback.
Well, I did actually confirm both properties, the canopies meet the setback.
Okay, all right, thank you. Thanks for checking on that.
Based on the site plans that were submitted.
Yeah, okay.
Uh, Ross, just so you know, it wasn't.
Go ahead.
Uh, just so you know, it wasn't the canopies that were at issue at those two properties. At Ford Giuseppe, there's actually a Dunkin' Donuts, um, drive-through that is within the setback area.
Yeah.
Be clear. And then directly across the street at 28 Worcester Road, there actually is a, a building in front of the liquor store that is well within, and I'm talking a building. It, it's not a structure, it's a building that was within 10 feet of the right of way line.
Yep, because I think that that was, um, it appears to be a building there. And I think that's how they got around that.
Right, original Francesco, right.
But there was, there was no waivers filed on, I mean, the Dunkin' Donuts drive-through is brand new. I mean, that's, I think it was 2015.
They did get a variance.
Yeah, they got a variance for the stone wall. That's the retaining wall, but I didn't see any other variance on that application.
Well, I mean, that's, none of this is within the purview of the board. If the zoning official says something needs a variance, it's a matter that Mr. Pyke will have to take up with him. We can only go by the guidance that we're being given.
Of course.
And the information. All right, Steve, you want to give a quick overview of the site plan for the board, if you would, please?
Not a problem. I just wanted to make, make a brief connect, uh, brief connect correction. Ross, in your introduction, you said that we had four pumps. There's actually eight. Um, and that's, but that's fine. Um, one of the conditions that was, um, I guess initially discussed with this placement of this facility was that what we wanted to do are, are, let's say, our obligations as a good neighbor and a good designer. Uh, we wanted to reduce the amount of impervious on the site. And if you just do a quick comparison, uh, with the existing additions plan um, with what's proposed, it's fairly significant, smaller footprint. Um, what we've done in essence is review, reduce the peak flows off the site. And our drainage actually exhibits that. The peak that we have to retain is, is minor. So we're able to utilize and make a connection to this, uh, the state root, um, drainage system. And, uh, we're currently doing an application to connect to the straight, uh, the state right, right away, a storm drainage. Uh, there'll also be utility connections with septic and, uh, Uh, there'll also be utility connections with septic and, uh, also you, you know, utility connections with power and, uh, most of, I don't believe we're doing gas, but there's not a requirement in the building. Uh, there is three ten thousand, um, gallon, uh, storage tanks for Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, in those, these are double-walled fiberglass tanks, uh, that are, have interstitial monitoring. So if there is any detection of moisture within those double walls, uh, there's actually an alarm that goes off in the building. Um, so I guess we are close to the resource area and we just, again, we wanted to be very careful about, you know, what it is that we're putting on, on this particular property because even across the street, I, I know at some point, uh, in the back of us, um, Larry McKissick has a construction bills business that there was a fuel oil spill that actually went into the storm drainage and right through this, uh, storm drainage that we're connecting to, and it caused quite a mess. Um, one of the things we want the board to be confident in is that the way that we manage fuel on this site, and just to give you a, a brief primer on this, there is no ability to store, um, let's say gasoline in the pumps themselves. Um, what the pumps typically do is they exhibit, if there is a, 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 a call for fuel, it will actually take the fuel and it will distribute it in, into the tanks. But then what it is, is when it stops, it, it actually goes back into the tanks. And, um, so if the concern is that that, any of these pumps have, are storing gasoline, that's not factual. Uh, so I just wanted to reassure everyone on that. Obviously, if there are spills when there could be potentially a drive-away from the pumps where someone had inadvertently uh, left the nozzle in the tank and then drove away, uh, there's actually a containment center, uh, in the, in the slab itself. If you look at, at most typically, an apron around, uh, uh, a, a, a typical drive-through, um, pump facility, there are these lines, if you will, that have been scored in the concrete. Now that would actually channel and, and allow anyone that would have cleanup skills that could go in there and put quick wheat and actually clean up any kind of fuel oil spills. So if, if not only, um, let's say there was a spill on the, the apron itself, it is relatively easy to clean up. Uh, and it certainly will be handled as a hazardous ways to do that. Uh, the other thing that I'd just like to also point out is what we want to do is, and then there was initially some confusion in, in the review uh, with the building commissioner, uh, that this, um, facility actually has a flush condition around the building. As, as you go from the paved way and then from, let's say, an accessible space, um, there is no curb. So we don't have curb ramps up and down and onto the walks that actually go into the building. Those are flush conditions. Uh, we felt that it, it's not only a maintenance issue, but it's an accessibility issue that we wanted to address. But we do provide, um, a sidewalk to the state ri- right-of-way, uh, to the left or to the western part of the site. And all of the ramp systems and all of the slopes that are on those sidewalks are compliant with complete streets. So the, the curb ramps, the longitudinal, um, actual slopes that go up into the ramps are all compliant with MAST DOT. So one of the other features that we will be doing in here, and, and if you would like, I, I know that some of you are curious and probably have gone into the site. We've actually straightened out this gutter line. It was kind of going in and out and it was meandering. Um, and Chris Chambers and Eric, uh, from the DOT had encouraged us to straighten this out. So it actually helps the hydraulics that come from this side of the road, which is crowned, and then goes to the gutter line and then eventually, um, if, if you look at, there are structures in, on that, let's say, eastern side, uh, where we're draining to. And we have extended the Cape Cod berm and the walk to our property line, uh, to manage that front of the site. Uh, so one of the other things that I'd like to bring to your attention, that there are temporary traffic, um, conditions that we will need to take a lane uh, during the construction process. So, uh, we have provided temps to DOT and they are currently evaluating them in terms of their methods for temporary traffic, um, diversion, uh, when construction is taking place here. Um, we've taken great pains to be very careful and to comply with all of the state standards, not only with the walk systems, but the construction standards, uh, for the curbs and also the walks. Um, there is an issue that, um, the building official has brought up about. Um, there is something called a paper street or, uh, uh, access to easements for both septic and, uh, also stormwater. Um, what our plan is there is we plan obviously to change the, the locations of the, the openings, the driveway openings. Um, but we don't plan to, uh, let's say deny people access to any of the utilities or, that are going up and into the site to the back and then eventually going to Griffin Road. Um, in fact, what we want to do and, and we'd like to start the discussion, we've, our, our attorney, we actually have two attorneys working on this. We believe that this paper street, uh, right-of-way that goes to the McKissick property has been extinguished. We don't believe it exists. Um, one of the things that you should also know, just in speaking with DOT about how we rearrange these cur- these driveway openings, the important part is here is they will only grant a, a use, if you will, that is not mixed. And what I mean by that, the only thing that these driveway o- openings will service is the proposed use, the convenience store, the gas station. Uh, they will not grant us a driveway permit opening if we try to access the property to the rear of, um, Mr. Wahib's property. So the premise that we have to continue this and keep it as Mr. Meskis, uh, had referred to it as unabridged or abridged, um, that's just, will not work. So we have to come up with a method. Our lawyers believe that there is no right-of-way for a street there, and we would like, of course, a ruling on that. So with that, I'll just open it up for questions and, uh, I would encourage, uh, you to have many and thoughtful questions when, if there's anything I've left out, please let me know.
Alright, thank you Steve. Any questions from the board?
Ross, I did have a question.
What, Jean?
Um, you said that there were three tanks, but you sort of cut out, how big are those tanks?
Ten thousand gallons, sorry.
Each?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Steve, you have any?
Mr. Michael? Any diesel on-site or is this just, uh, unleaded gasoline?
Uh, just regular unleaded gasoline, Mr. Fontaine.
Any EV charging stations in the parking lot?
Uh, currently, we're not required to do that, but if, if the board would so, um, deem us to do that, we can, I believe it's a percentage, uh, just in looking at the mass dot spec, which is the only guidance that I have found in Massachusetts for this particular kind. I think what they, they require is, is one to two percent of the total parking spaces. So I'm also proposing another, uh, facility up on three sixty, uh, Worcester Road currently, and we plan on proposing, uh, ten EV charging stations there. Um, but I mean, it would be at the discretion of the board. If you, if you feel that that's an important thing to, to put into our facility, we certainly would be willing to look at that.
And I, I was just asking that question, Mr. Michael, just as, uh, I wonder if the business is, um, thinking that's a benefit. So it, it, it's not a requirement from the board, but I was just curious from a business point of view. Um, are they putting solar on the roof? Any
Uh, nothing.
That or, or on the canopies?
No, again, uh, Mr. Wahib isn't looking to do that.
Do you know how this site, uh, the, the convenience store, what is the fuel to, to heat that or cool that facility?
Uh, that, again, this is concept architecture, so we, we would certainly do a load balancing, um, for all of the systems within the building. And that's usually done on the construction plan phase. It's not a done-in concept architecture.
Got it. Thanks, Mr. Michael. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fontaine.
Ross, I have one other question.
Go ahead Jean.
Um, are you using town water or is this well zone site?
Uh, currently, if you look, if, Ross, if you could just go to the existing condition plan, I can help the member, um, actually locate where the main is.
John will do that for you.
And if you wanted to, you could just, to the front of the site on the center, I can actually show you where the water main is. Uh, there's, and I should also go into this next point, and I, I thank you for bringing this up. If you could just, uh, zoom in where it says the existing, uh, curb cut, Ross, right in, uh, yes, right on the, right below your cursor.
Right there, John, thank you.
So Jean, if, if you look just above, okay, Ross is doing a great job here. Um, if you look just to there, there's an existing ten-inch water main, uh, right at the gutter line. Can you see it, Jean? Jean, sorry.
That's okay, yeah, okay.
So what we, we would obviously be, uh, connecting to that water main to facilitate any use within the, the occupancy. Uh, but I just wanted to bring you, uh, your attention to a request for a hydrant. Um, typically this comes, gets requested by the peer review engineer. I'm not sure why a building official is asking this question, but he's, he's referring directly to, um, if you look at comment number four, said the closest fire hydrant, uh, to this facility is on so, South Sturbridge Road. On page two, Ross, almost the center there.
Yep. Got it.
Okay.
Just as some background, Steve, he is the assistant fire chief.
Uh-huh.
Where that comment might come from.
But he was issuing comments as a building and zoning officer.
I, I hear you.
Just so I understand the dynamic, that's all.
Yep.
Okay, so that's an interesting question, obviously. Um, the applicant will be willing to review that, but really what we're doing is we're building in the state right-of-way. Um, so as I see it, I, I will do anything that MAST DOT requests us to do. In this case, if they request us to put a hydrant, it would certainly, the connection would be at the discretion of MAST DOT District Three Maintenance Division. Any type of utility that we connect to in this right-of-way has to go through that office and they have to issue a permit for it. Um, the applicant is certainly willing to look at that, but it has to be, come from DOT as a requirement. Uh, we will be doing fire suppression in the building. That's, that's not an issue. We do it with most steel buildings uh, of this square footage, um, and also because it's a public space. So we don't, we don't see that as an issue, but putting a hydrant just at the request of a building official, I'm not sure. I, I certainly would be willing to look at it with the applicant. But just again, to answer Jean's question, we will be connecting our water services to this existing ten-inch main. Uh, so that would be the plan, at least at this point.
Okay, and would you have a fire suppressant, uh, system like built into the canopy? That automatically?
That's a great question, Jean. Thank you for asking it. Uh, that's a, uh, that's not a, that's a dry system. It's not a wet system. So those are independent of the water facilities, if you, if you will, uh, for the occupancy. Um, and then the fire suppression service obviously is within the building. Um, and we would certainly do that, um, to, and, and that's really a re- that's a request, um, there are two codes that are building codes that are active here in terms of just the building. Now it's IBC tw- twenty fifteen and also the state building code. Now this tough, the tougher code of the two, uh, in this case is the state building code, and the state building code requires, and we will put, put that in the building for si- fire suppression.
Okay. Thank you.
Welcome.
Alright, John, do you have any questions?
No, Ross, I, I guess I'll just um, to hear from the state to see what, what's gonna be the final, uh, drainage, especially.
Right.
Signing to the.
I do have a question for the board though, when you're ready.
Alright, let's see, Don, do you have any questions at all for the applicant?
Yeah, I just had one clarification, one clarification. Um, you, did you say that these entrances would be changing from where they are now?
They are, they are changing, yes.
Okay, okay. So when, when do we get an idea of what the new drawings are or?
Oh, they're there. Uh, you can just compare and contrast.
Okay.
If you go to the existing conditions plan and compare it with what we're showing on the layout plan, you'll see there are differences.
Okay, I understand, I understand, I got it.
Okay.
Alright, Steve, are you proposing any signage for, uh, do not enter, because I, look at the plan, it's just there's one way in, one way out.
Yeah, if you look at the, the, the site layout plan and that's, uh, sheet two-two, Ross.
Yep.
You see the, the, the little circles with the, the letters in them?
Correct.
Those are signs, okay?
Just wanna, just wanna check this. I know I've
Yep.
Gas stations in town that I visit, and it seems sense to have them one way in, one way out on it.
Yep, those signs are gonna be up there, and if you look at the bottom, there's a legend on each sign. Bottom of the sheet. There you go, just a little bit higher there. Now to the left, there you go.
You're good.
So there's, there's a signage for the site.
Okay, thank you. Before I turn over this to the question, do you guys, do the board, anyone else on the board have any questions?
I know Bill kind of touched upon this, but because they're proposing to make all cars electric, um, in the next couple of years, are we going to ask that there be a couple of charging stations just to get in front of that?
Uh, any other? Um, any thoughts on that from any other board members? With any charging stations?
I mean, my, my opinion on that, Alicia, or through the board is, um, I mean, it's a, it's a business decision right now. Uh, I don't know if we have the ability to compel an applicant to, to do that. Um, unless, you know, the state starts to, uh, and I think there is a requirement there, um, but not on maybe a facility of this size.
That's exactly what I was asking, exactly, Bill. So do we have any onus to that? Can we do anything about that? Just because, again, trying to get in front of this in the next couple of years, if that does, if, you know, all the cars have to be hybrid, do we want to do, can we, not do we want to, but can we do anything? And is that something the applicant is willing to add?
Well, um, in order to do that, you'd have to amend the bylaws. Right now, as Bill said, we can't, we can request they do it, if, consider doing it if you'd like, but we can't compel an applicant at this point to do it. So that would be up to them. They want to consider that. It's a good idea, but we can't compel them to do it at this time.
Okay, thank you.
We amend our bylaws.
Alright, any other questions or comments?
Um, I guess similar to that, is there a, a state law requirement that we know that it does compel a gas station to put in EV charging stations? Or, Mr. Michael, are you aware of that, uh, from a state level maybe?
Uh, it's not required at a state level or in any of the state structures or, let's say, facilities, if you will. I do know that at most, um, drive, drive, uh, what do they call them? Um, on, on all of the pikes, there are EV charging stations at the park and rides. And there's also canopies, uh, that are solar. Um, it is, if you, if you go by, let's say, Mast Dot District Three in Worcester, uh, they have EV charging stations and they're complied by the federal law to have those charging stations and solar canopy, canopies there. Mast Dot also has guidance on not only canopies, but how, um, for example, a charging station may be put on a site. Um, there are requirements about what the charging station's electrical capacity should be, uh, how it should be arranged in relationship to the building. Um, and I would, well, I can send this to Randy and you guys can look at it, but there is guidance on this. It's a, a wonderful piece of, uh, it's a slideshow that was put together by DOT. And it actually talks specifically to this, to help planners, uh, and to help people that, um, like yourselves that are curious about these standards. Um, the one thing that I would, if, if I had to say the bad idea that I seen there, that they actually combined accessible use parking with charging stations, I don't think that's a good idea. Um, at, at this point, there's no guidance that compels people to do it that way. But I, to me, I just think it's poor, poor design practice.
I would actually have to agree. I, I would like to see a separate section set aside for that.
So I can send Randy that guidance if you guys are interested in it.
Yeah, thank you for sharing.
Thank you.
All right, Steve, you mentioned that you have questions for the board.
I do. I guess the, the primary question I have for, for both, well, everyone on the board is in neighboring municipalities, they, they appoint what's called a stormwater authority. Now, I, I'm not familiar, that familiar with this, the, the planning board and, and I'm sorry, the subdivision regs and the zoning regs to say that I've noticed anything like that. Now, is there such a requirement that makes, for example, the the Conservation Commission, the Stormwater Authority for all applications before the town?
Randy?
This past year, this past summer, the Conservation Commission upgraded the stormwater regulations and they basically are the authority as far as reviewing and dealing with the stormwater regulations. They also can use Mike Andres for review of any applications. But they are the authority in Charleston as far as dealing with stormwater regulations.
Okay, the one thing that I did have this conversation with Angela already, and I also talked to the state D O T people about it as well. Because of the updates on the regulations, they use, there's a guidance that's out there to actually remove phosphorus from all of the stormwater on the site. Now, for this particular site, because we're reducing impervious and we are, we are tying into the state system with our stormwater. And we are recharging from our clean stormwater, which is the roof, back into the groundwater table. But our concern was initially, and we, we started to do an evaluation of this, just looking at, okay, well, these new regulations, what are they? How do they apply for this particular redevelopment site? Now, as we started asking questions, I started consulting with stormwater professionals that actually manufacture these chambers that not only remove grit from the paved areas, but also provide filtration for phosphorus. So initially, when we looked at this, I spoke with Angela and I said, okay, what rates at which we should be looking at to look for filtration of phosphorus? Now, this is an important talk topic because as we see it, and as I, I actually used to work for 12, almost 13 years down in Bloomfield, Connecticut. And in that time, I worked with the Connecticut D O T and also the wetlands agencies down there. And they were, at the time, were just beginning of the permitting for most of what we enjoy in terms of the management of stormwater. In this particular case, they had the same concerns about phosphorus and stormwater. And what generated my curiosity was the level at which Angela has proposed that you remove phosphorus from the stormwater. Now, we have something that's called a water quality value. And that's true across the site. So that water quality value has a number. And in, in her current regulations, what she's asking for is point eight of that water quality volume. Now, that's what she's requiring that we use to filter phosphorus from the site and in a way that's up gradient from our final connecting point to the state system. Now, we spoke with contact to the people that actually manufacture filtration systems. And we'll also manufacture the system that we will use as part of our B M P measures to clean the stormwater that comes from the paved surfaces. We're going to use a storm scepter unit and it will remove more than 80% of the B M Ps or act as 80% of the B M Ps to, to clean the stormwater that comes from our site. It's part of the treatment train, if you will. Now, this requirement to treat phosphorus that is currently on this, on the bylaws right now is gonna, we're gonna have to treat point eight percent of that value. So I spoke with the people at contact and I, and I said, okay, what would we be compelled to do in order to meet this standard? And they proposed two things. If we only treat a half an inch of the water quality volume, then the storm scepter we, unit that we had would do the job. And that's about eight grand. But if we were required to do the point eight, or it's really the one inch storm for the water quality volume, what we would have to do is, there's, there's a couple of different ways you could do it. You could do a rain garden and that would have to be up gradient from all of your stormwater and you dump everything in and then there would be a final outlet into your final connection. And you could achieve, just by using certain plants that eat phosphorus in the rain garden, you'd meet that requirement. But this site is very, it's small and we don't have a lot of room to do this. And as you can see, if you go to the grading plan, Ross, what will happen is this site kind of drains from the north, the northwest, and then it goes to the bottom of the sheet, to the southeastern part of the site. Are you gonna have to go up? Sorry.
This page.
Grading. One more, there you go, right there. Okay, so I don't know if you guys can see this, but I'll slowly point it out to you. So if you see the retaining wall in the very top corner of the site, most of that stormwater is going to kind of go on the diagonal, if you will, to a low point by the, the, the western, well, I'm sorry, the eastern entrance to the site. So there's really no opportunity to, to do above ground systems because it would be difficult because you'd have to put it in all of these easements and connections to stormwater and connections to utilities. So I said to Angela, I said, well, a mechanical method would cost us just to filter this phosphorus from the site about $32,000. And there would have to be a, a way that, you know, at least every two years, that those filters get changed. Now, that's a fairly expensive thing to do and have an expectation that this could, let's say, work on a site like this. So my advice to you is any applications before you that are also having similar requirements from the Stormwater Authority, in this case Angela, that you, you ask these questions because these are fairly expensive propositions. And I think we all should get a little bit smarter about it. And I'm glad I asked this question because she had to back out of it. Because there was no way that we could do this. So right now, this site will not comply with that standard, just so you guys know. We will not, go ahead, sorry, Russ.
What's the, what's the state standard? Is it, is that, is it the?
That is the state standard. She's using the state standard.
Right, this, this is all within the purview of the Conservation Commission. Peter Boyer, I don't know if you recall, he brought this up at an earlier meeting for one of the properties the Boyer family owns and you know, I agree that their measures are restrictive, but we don't have any authority in this. This is completely up to the Conservation Commission.
Agreed.
Yeah.
But I just, again, I want to make you aware of that these standards are fairly prohibitive and restrictive, as Randy is saying. And honestly, I'm not sure if all of the members on Conservation Commission are aware that, what these standards, the implication of these standards. So I would encourage everyone to talk about it because there, there has to be some leeway here. And I know that there's state standards, Randy. I completely understand. But to ask an applicant to, to make this kind of an investment is prohibitive.
All right, Steve, to bring that up and also can, it can cripple put a damp on a small business opening up or something, doing something. I, I mean, the state standards are still.
Yeah, I, I have the new stormwater, you know, regulations are very, they do make these like, relatively speaking, smaller projects very cost prohibitive just to deal with the stormwater, forgetting anything else you have to deal with the site. That's a, you know, chunk of money just to deal with stormwater.
Right.
All right, so Randy, we're wait, we're still waiting for Mike Andrew to report?
Yeah, I mean, at this point in time, I don't know how much more we can, unless somebody has something else like to bring up, but you know, in hopes that Mike Andrew, I guess this before next week that we, you know, and Mr. Pyke will probably have an opportunity to address any of his questions that, you know, we can continue at the next meeting.
Yep, I got you. Do, before I go that, is there anyone from the public that has any questions or comments? If you do, I'd ask that you state your name and address. All right. Hearing none, seeing none. Do we have a motion to continue this public hearing until February 2nd, Randy?
Yeah, yeah, we'll put it at seven, 10 on May 2nd. We will have fourscore first at seven, but just in case so that we're not waiting around something happens with that application.
You didn't say February 2nd, right, Randy?
February 2nd.
Thank you.
Does that work for you, Steve?
Yes, it does. Thank you.
Then I'll make a motion, we continue this public hearing until February 2nd for 16 Sturbridge Road.
Second that, Bill Fontaine.
All right, all those in favor of Jean Vincent?
Hi.
Alicia?
Hi.
John Clay?
Hi.
John Smith?
Hi.
Bill Fontaine?
Hi.
Ross N F I. Thank you, Steve.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Mr. Fontaine.
Thanks, Mr. Pyke.
Next up, we got Gare, L O C Jennings Road Extension Phase Two Bond Reduction Request. We have a
Yeah, I believe you have a report from Graze Engineering on what the recommended reduction in the bond amount would be. They did.
December 22nd, right?
Right, so they're reducing the bond amount from 176,988 to 147,490, which would be a reduction of $29,498.
Have it here somewhere, but
Randy, I thought it was going from 209 down to 176. Am I reading that wrong? That is the wrong, wrong, wrong page.
I'm missing a page, I might be missing a page here.
First page, did you get the previous total of 209,082?
Oh, I'm sorry, yes.
$94. The revised total is 176,988.
You are correct.
All right, just want to make sure we got it right here.
Yeah. Let's get to the wrong page.
Yeah, yeah, you're looking at the yeah, the spreadsheet. Understood. All right, we have a motion to reduce the bond amount on Jennings Road Extension Phase Two from 209,082 to 176,988.
Second that, Bill Fontaine.
All those in favor of Jean Vincent?
Hi. Hi.
John Clay?
Hi.
John Smith?
Hi.
Bill Fontaine?
Hi.
Ross N F I. All right, next up, zoning bylaws, diagnostic review.
Yes, I had anticipated Gabe Trevor was going to be here at the meeting tonight and I don't see him here on the meeting.
All right.
Just to give the board an update, because I did check into, like, trying to get this on the warrant. Actually, in its current form, it's pretty much addressed everything that we've discussed. And the one thing I just wanted to point out is we had discussed about multifamily in the community business zone. Under the use table, the board had already recommended to make it a special permit. So that's already in the recommendations for the amendments to the bylaw. I have to tell town administrator by March 2nd if we want to be put on a town meeting. Right now, we, we don't have to have our public hearing by that point, but we have to, I have to tell him so that we have put in as a placeholder. So we have to now assert a day's advantage for our public hearing. So I don't know if the board wants to consider doing that, or if they have some issues that they still want to address here.
I say we try to get it on the, on the, on the warrant, but it still gives us a little bit of time to, to fine tune this to make sure it's, it's got everything we need. But if, if we've just got to get a line item on the warrant, and if we don't make that, we can always drop it. But
Right. I mean, if we, like you notice, we're probably carrying sometime in March, we would have ample time to have one or two public carers prior to the town meeting. So then we know if we have a comfort levered level to move forward or not.
Sounds good to me.
I would suggest we put in a placeholder for it now.
Okay.
Do you need a vote on that or a motion?
Not necessarily. We don't need to vote on that. It's I will, we'll have to, you know, at some point, schedule the public hearing, but we basically have a, you know, month, month and a half to, you know, consider doing that. So I was anticipating Gabe, he confirmed he was going to be at the meeting tonight. I don't know what happened, but the only thing we haven't ironed out yet, and maybe it might be simpler to, we can do the the wording changes in the bylaws themselves and possibly the map change in the fall if we don't get to it. You know, that's just something to consider. In case we can't get it all done right now, you know, separate items so that we can get the bylaws all amended and then deal with the map at a later time if we choose, if we can't get to it for the annual town meeting.
Yeah, that would probably make perfect sense anyways. We think it's all about momentum once we get going.
Right.
Get some, some feedback and getting people knowing what they're looking at and then.
Well, I'll try to get this in a more finalized form because also, because, you know, at a later meeting, they'll wait till the board votes on it, but that we can post it on the town website and advertise that they're there. So the public wishes to make comments and then, of course, we'll advertise for a public caring, you know, the first public caring day. In anticipation, there might be a second one, depending on how much interest there is.
All right, sounds like a game plan.
Thank you, Randy.
Yeah. All right. Next up, we got some minutes just from December 1st. Jane had emailed to us.
So, yeah, one, one quick question, Randy. So there was some, there were some things in the, in the folder for 157 Worcester Road.
Yes, the, that's actually we didn't get the notice done properly. So that between Jane and myself being sick and everything, we kind of fell through the cracks as far as getting the notice done properly. So we felt to renotice, which is what we've done for the February 2nd meeting. So it was in, that, that's a fault of myself, you know, that we just didn't get it done correctly, but play it safe, we decided to renotice for the next meeting and the applicant didn't have a problem with that.
Okay, okay, just a little confused there. Okay.
Right. So that'll be on the next meeting.
Okay. So it's just the So it's just the, uh, the draft minutes from December 1st is, is all we have then.
Right.
I make a motion, we accept them as presented.
I'll, I'll second that.
All right. All those in favor of Jean Vincent?
Hi.
Alicia?
Hi.
John Clay?
Hi.
John Smith?
Right.
Phil Fontaine?
Hi.
Ross and FCI. All right. And we got other business unknown at time of posting.
Actually, I just wanted to make a couple of announcements. Uh, one is, uh, as we're all familiar with the Hammond Woods development, Mr. Reardon had finally gotten a hold of National Grid. A National Grid wants to plan of where all the pipes are in the ground. Mr. Reardon does not have that. And so I don't know what's going to happen there. But, uh, yeah, they, they want to know where those pipes are and, you know, in fairness, Bruce Turean, it was all done before he owned the project, but it's a problem. So I don't know what he's doing at this time. But National Grid won't hook it all up until they know where all the lines are being run underground.
For the, for the lighting?
Yes. Because it runs under the road, runs down the side, you know, it's in various locations. And there's no, nothing to show where they are. National Grid wants a, you know, schematic of where those pipes are in the ground. So that, I don't know how he's going to resolve that because I think it's plastic too. So.
Yeah, but you can have an infrared, um, done, I think.
Yeah.
Familiar with that, where they, they've done a, you can access DigSafe and they infrared it, you have a company coming and doing this, shows a camera underneath the ground.
I figured there must be a way.
Yeah, the DigSafe can, um, can track those wires underneath the ground. So at least they can follow the path. I don't think they're gonna see any pipes, but.
Well, it, the path is really what they need to know. They don't care about the pipe itself. They just want to know where they are.
That's pretty easy to do with trace on the wires.
Yeah. And the, uh, the second item is, uh, you know, we had the, uh, lawsuit going on with, uh, Zero Point had challenged the planning board on the, uh, uh, bond amounts and everything. Well, they, they had ruled, uh, on it and, uh, Zero Point had a, a certain time period to appeal. They missed the deadline. They blamed it on the town saying, oh, town hall hours, we've been wide open all summer. So the judge didn't buy it, did not grant their appeal. So we ever get the final confirmation, but it looks like the planning board, uh, won that battle. So they upheld the planning board's decision to have the, you know, the $100,000 per battery and per, you know, megawatt as the planning board had, uh, required those bonds to be.
Cash bond too, right?
Yeah. And the, the good thing about it too is like moving forward, if, uh, since it's been upheld, it kind of gives us more, uh, power to do it again if, you know, something else comes along.
Does, does that mean that, uh, Zero Point dropped their lawsuit or withdrawn or?
Well, they, they appealed and they, they didn't, they had judged and granted the appeal.
Okay.
Because they filed too late.
Okay.
They lost. So that gives us confirmation that our policy is sound. That's good.
Right.
Now, Randy, have you heard anything more on with, um, 508 and the operating hours? How do we read that?
Which one is that? I'm sorry.
508 and the year round operation.
Um, Russ James is actually, um, it's winter time and he hasn't been doing a whole lot, you know, but, uh, he is, um, Kurt Mascus and I are supposed to sit down with him and come up with a game plan and how to submit, um, you know, a modified plan of what he would like to do to the board so that the, you know, they can do an amended site plan modification to hopefully address the issues and make it clear of when he can operate.
Oh yeah, then, uh, who gave, uh, Gary Jackson Auto, uh, Auto Sales the software?
They're actually, he's, uh, submitting, I actually working with his engineer right now. They're going to submit a new site plan. They're planning to put up a new building and everything. So they, his engineer is preparing the plan right now. So I anticipate we're gonna see it soon.
All right, cool. All right. The board have anything else?
No.
All right. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
All right. All those in favor of Jean Vincent?
Hi.
Alicia?
Hi.
John Clay?
Hi.
John Smith?
Hi.
Phil Fontaine?
Hi.
Ross and FCI. All right. You guys have a great weekend.
Hey, John.
Yeah. Let's try.
John Smith.
Yes, Jeannie.
Tell your wife congratulations.
Oh, I will. Yes, yes.
Yes. Good going.
I'm members of the ecotarium now, so.
Yes.
So, so she's gonna bring you to all those nice fundraising dinners and everything else that they have out there?
Gotta clean up my act, dog.
Time for a haircut, right?
Gonna name the panda bear after you or something. The turtles have, female turtles have brown eyes and all the other male turtles always have some type of fleck or red eye. That's how you tell a difference between a male and a female turtle.
Well, you've been paying attention.
Wow.
I have been.
Congratulations to you too, then. You're studying up on it.
I, you know what I'm going to be? I'm retiring and I asked my wife for a position as driving the train. So.
I love that train. Good for you.
You guys, we can make, take turns. We'll tell her you guys the best wishes. Thank you very much.
Absolutely.
See y'all.
You guys ready to move on?
Bye. See you later.
Good night.